Let's call the meeting of the Mount Clemens Board of Education to order. Call the roll.
Ms. Collins.
Here.
Dr. McFadden.
Here.
Mr. Monk.
Here.
Mrs. O'Neil.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Here.
Ms. Jarrett.
She went to change her heels.
Okay.
We saw her.
Well, let's go back. Ms. Walker?
Here.
Okay, a quorum has been established. We did see Ms. Jarrett, but she may have technical difficulties, but she was on the meeting. Well, when she joins in, we'll accept her and put her in the minutes. All right. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, I would ask Vice President Walker to state the pledge for it, if you don't mind, ma'am.
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Walker. Next on the agenda are citizens' comments. This is a portion of where you, the citizens, can address the board with any of your questions, comments, or concerns. We ask that you be recognized. Since we're on a Zoom media, there should be a wave button or indicate that you want to make a comment. There should be a comment column so you can request the recognition. We ask that you state your name and address. Be mindful that you have three minutes by which to make your questions, comments, or concerns. You may not receive a particularly sponsored inquiries here this evening. And last but not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, and concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments.
You have Ms. Nickel, Mr. Rickman.
All right, Ms. Nichols, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Christie Nickel, Mount Clemens Education Association President. I will list my normal address as 155 Cass Avenue. I live in Madison Heights, though, 277-57-Deltin. I just, I was not able to make previous meetings this month. I just wanted to wish the board a Happy New Year and personally welcome board members on behalf of the teaching staff here at Mount Clemens. If there's ever a time, new board members or old board members, you want to sit down for a one-on-one, my email address is nickelk, N-I-C-K-E-L-K, at mtcps.org, or my extension here at the high school is 3464. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions, concerns, things you want to share with me as representative of the teaching staff. If you ask the kids, there's a, so you can find me. I also wanted to update up the board. I know it was brought up at a previous session. The teachers' union had not received a copy of the contract as of the first of the year. We actually have received a copy of that contract, and we are finalizing it hopefully this week to make sure that all the I's are dotted and T's are crossed. So that, there has been communication from Tru and with that, in regards to that. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we will have official copies. So I just wanted to give you guys an update. And Happy New Year.
Thank you so much for those comments. The agenda is still open for citizens' comments. Second call, citizens' comments. Any raised hands, Mr. Linnenberg?
No, sir.
Last call, citizens' comments. Seeing or hearing none. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is an action item. Item five under consent agenda, five A, approval of the minutes of the one December 16, 2020 regular meeting, two, January 6, 2021 organizational meeting, three, January 14, 2021 board workshop, B, approval of bills for payments. The chair would entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda.
President?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Moved by Dr. Matt Fadden to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Second, Ms. Walker. Any comments, concerns regarding the consent agenda? Seeing or hearing none? Call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Ms. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil.
Yeah.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes. Did you call Ms. Collins? I don't remember.
Yes, she was third.
Okay, thank you. The motion carries. Agenda item six, approval of loan application for roof repairs and the granting of permission for the superintendent to sign the application. This is Bill.
This item was presented to the board at our workshop. You all know that we need roof repairs on the middle school area of our, of our secondary complex. And this is an opportunity to receive a loan through the U.S. Department of Agriculture. They have some grant funds, and they're also offering low-cost term loans for qualifying projects. And they believe that we may qualify. So what we are requesting tonight is that we are asking board support and a vote on the motion to approve the application and give the superintendent, give me the ability to sign the application.
Mr. President. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Dr. Matt Fadden, I'm sorry.
I move to approve that motion.
It's moved by Dr. Matt Fadden to approve the loan application for roof repairs and the granting of permission for the superintendent to sign the application. Is there a second?
Support.
Second, Mrs. Jarrett. Any questions or discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Now, superintendent, this is just authorization to sign on the loan because we don't know exactly the terms of the loan as of yet, correct?
That's correct, Dr. McFadden. So what we're doing is you're allowing me to sign the application. Once things are through and it's approved, we'll bring everything back to the board.
Good. Thank you.
And just to piggyback on that question from Dr. Matt Fadden, so in the workshop, it was discussed as a pre-application. So this is authorizing you to be the signer of the pre-application because we don't know all of the details of what the application, I mean, what the details of it is. We're just doing this so we can be alive for the potential loan.
Correct.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing or seeing none? Call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Sorry, I was on mute. Yes.
Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil.
Yeah.
Ms. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the resolution regarding the Karn Center. Mrs. Bills.
At our work session, we were directed by the board to get some information from our attorneys as to what to do regarding the lease at the Karn Center and if there's a possibility to terminate this lease early. The information from our attorney says that the district and the city can enter into a new agreement for early termination of the lease. That termination agreement would depend on both parties agreeing. And what we would like to, and Tru would be happy to contact the city and draft an early termination agreement, which would be easy to do and end the district's responsibilities with Karn Center. That's one of the options. Another option would be an assignment. So if the city is unwilling to enter into an early termination agreement, the district may try to assign its leasehold interest to another party, such as Advancing Macomb or another party similar to that. This would make the third party able to stand in the district's shoes and assume all of the district's interests in the property for the remainder of the lease term, which is till the year 2103. The party would have to use the property for public services, just the same we all have to do. And the assignment would be contingent upon receiving prior written permission from the city and from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. You all also received a copy of the lease, and I do believe that Mr. Rickman has a few things to add to this conversation.
Yes, we all, we all got a, a copy from the attorney, I think, his opinion, correct?
Yes.
And in my review of the lease, his letter, the attorney's letter came, there were two options. The city have to agree to take it back, or we could assign it to somebody. When I looked at the lease, paragraph 14, which says consolidations, change, and status. In the second paragraph of that, the second sentence, I should say, "In the event Leesee, which is us, no longer desires to utilize the facility, ceases to operate as a school district, or changes its legal status, this agreement shall terminate and lease or shall immediately take ownership of possession of the facility, and Leesee shall execute any and all documents necessary to validate the transfer of ownership, provided however that the Leesor shall have no obligations to Leesee to use the property as a facility." So if in event the city did not agree to take the property, paragraph 14 in the second sentence of the lease agreement gives the Leesee, which is the district, if we choose no longer to operate the facility, it doesn't indicate why, and we can't operate it because of financial challenges, that we can turn the property back over to the city. So I know we talked about this in the workshop, and so I would just like everyone else's input that would like to address this issue.
Mr. President, should we make a motion to approve the resolution for discussion, or should we just go right into discussion?
I'm willing to have discussion.
Okay, okay. So basically, what you, what you're saying and what the letter is saying is if our financial, if we're, if we're, if we have financial constraints to facilitate or to operate the facility to maximum capacity, we have the right to terminate the lease.
It doesn't specifically say finances, but it does say, "In the event Leesee no longer desires", and it doesn't indicate or spell out what the desires are. It just says, "No longer desires to utilize the facility." And, or, or the district ceases to operate as a school district or changes legal status, this agreement shall terminate. So I'm reading that, and I'm not an attorney, but I'm interpreting that as if we no longer desire to utilize the facility, this agreement shall terminate. And.
I'm, hey, I'm understanding that the same way as you, Mr. President. So if the desire comes to the table that we don't longer want to operate that facility, now, do we have to make a two-way conversation with that with the city, or we can just submit the paperwork and say we no longer desire to operate this facility?
Again, I'm not an attorney, but based on, you know, what I'm reading, it say if we no longer have the desire, it says this, this agreement shall terminate. It doesn't have the covenants from the first, the two options that were sent from legal counsel, that the two bodies would have to agree upon it, or we assign it. If we desire no longer to utilize the facility, disagreement terminates.
With that being, with that being said, then should a resolution read different?
And that's why I had to, you know, open this for the discussion. For, I think that ideally the board should adopt a resolution, send it to the city, you know, with wording saying, "Based on economic challenges, the district is putting the city on notice that effective date", and in the workshop, we mentioned June 30, that effective June 30, the Mount Clemens housing, excuse me, the Mount Clemens Board of Education no longer has the desire to use, to utilize the facility. And we wish to terminate the lease agreement effective June 30, 2021. Or something to that effect, or we, or something that we, a resolution to direct the legal counsel to be in contact with the city manager, sharing the board's opinion of the board's desire to know, as of June 30, to no longer operate the facility. So when I read that, those are kind, you know, types of resolutions that just immediately came to my mind.
But, yeah, that was me. Reading this several times while you're talking about it, I get that the second sentence in that paragraph. However, the first sentence in the paragraph is regarding consolidation. We don't meet that criteria, and that's not an or and/or thing. I think that, I'm not a lawyer either, but in the event the Leesee is consolidated with another school district, this agreement shall continue in force with the successor school district. But I, and I agree with you with the, the item about no longer desire to utilize a facility. I guess maybe that's, I, I would agree that, I just think, maybe the attorney, when they were looking at this, and they came up those options and stuff, we need to bring this in front of them and say, hey, we don't, you know, why can't we do the information that we're not, we don't desire to do this? We can't afford it, for one.
Ms. Bill.
Mr. Monk.
Okay, Ms. Bills, got a couple of questions for you. First, did our legal counsel review the contract?
Yes.
Did our legal counsel say anything about the paragraph that Mr. Rickman is referring to?
I read to you what the legal counsel said.
Okay, so the legal counsel. Now, I understand, and I've heard, and we're not lawyers. And I'm talking to my fellow board members, we are not lawyers. We need to go with a recommendation from legal counsel as far as the direction we need to go with as far as retaining to Karn Field. I would not want to be, I would not want to make a motion to do anything without legal counsel representing us as far as, if we go in that direction, in the case that we go in that direction and we open our, we open ourselves up to other legal and also penalties of whatever that may cause. I don't know if it'll cause anything or not. So if Ms. Bills is saying the legal counsel reviewed this whole entire contract, that's what they do, that's why we pay them a return, a retainers fee, then I think we need to stick with the two options that legal counsel has sent over to us and pursue those two options. That's my thought.
I have a comment here as well. I'm actually looking at the lease, but I'm looking at number 11, surrender of premises, and that the property needs to be in good order and conditionable, reasonable wear and tear expected. So what kind of penalty do we have with the condition of the building? Are we going to have any financial penalty, walking away from a lease free and clear seems very odd to me?
I don't, I don't know, excuse me, if that was discussed with legal counsel, but I understand your concern. That's why we have this discussion.
Yep. How about if I go back to legal counsel and have some information for all of the board, either before our February work session or for our retreat that we're going to have?
I think that would be a wise decision for us to, for you to take all of these questions from every single board member back to legal counsel and get some type of legal recommendation. I think that's a wise decision.
Yep.
So, Mr. Monk.
Yes, sir.
I'm hearing you saying the board direct the superintendent to go back to legal counsel, asking about paragraph 11 and paragraph 14.
Yes, sir. You need, you need me to, you needed me to put that in a motion?
You're reading my mind, sir.
We've been working together way too long.
You gotta work together long. Get this right.
Right, right, right. Uh, Mr. President, I move that we have, I move that we direct the superintendent to contact legal counsel pertaining to paragraph, was it 14?
11.
11 and 14.
Paragraph 11 and 14 and get a legal consultation pertaining to those two paragraphs.
It's been moved by member Monk to direct the superintendent to be in contact with legal counsel regarding the Karn Center lease agreement to review paragraphs 11 and paragraph 14 regarding early termination of the lease.
Yep.
Is there a second?
Support.
I heard Mrs. Collins first.
It's fine.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? And help me out here, Paul and Mr. Monk, to direct superintendent to contact legal counsel regarding the Karn Center lease, looking at paragraphs 11 and 14 regarding early termination of the lease.
That's correct.
That's why I hit them.
And I do have a question, or I want to, can you read that paragraph 11 and 14?
What's that now?
It's about, it's questioning paragraph 11 and paragraph 14, correct?
Yes, because both of those are talking about surrendering or giving up the lease. Yeah.
And we're looking for clarity on those two paragraphs, correct?
Correct.
Okay, if they immediately come back and say, this is what it states, are we waiting for a response from them to make a movement, or can we just say in this motion goodbye, like, if it is saying, as we know, releasing our responsibility, can we just go with the resolution?
Well, this, the current resolution on the floor is to have a superintendent contact legal counsel to review those paragraphs and to give us recommendation regarding those paragraphs for early termination of the lease.
Right.
That's the only, the only action the resolution is doing is directing the superintendent to go back to legal counsel and review.
Okay, then you'll bring the action out and back to us later.
Yes, sir.
All right, hopefully sooner than later.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm good.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Some, I did something wrong. I don't see everybody, so I don't know if anybody's waving their hand or anything. So just shout out if you got a question or comment. All right, hearing or seeing none? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yeah.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Informational items. Item eight, Business and Finance Committee. We don't, we don't have those, but if any financial reports, Mrs. Bill.
Yes, I have, you have in your board pack, it's all of your financial reports.
Any questions regarding the financial report that begins on page 44?
Yes, I have a question. Rough about three months ago, and I meant to say this last month, we asked the finance director to also put in her reports, the report on food service that we were used to getting, and we have not been receiving. And I say that because we've already had to transfer funds to food service. So I would, I would like to see where we're at on a monthly basis, then to get to June, and there's a budget amendment to, we need to add X hundreds of thousands of dollars to the food service. So I would like to start seeing that on a regular basis like we used to. And like I said, that we, we asked that as a board about three months ago, and we have not been getting those reports on food service.
Mr., Mr. Monk, I do know that Mrs. Potter did prepare this, and I am looking at, looking through what you have in your board pack.
Yeah, I'm looking at it. Right when there, it used to be, let me tell you where, where it used to be. It used to be, hold on. I'm working with two computers. It used to be, it looks like a report like the special revenue fund report.
Yes.
It used to, yeah, it used to come right after that report.
Right, and if you would look at page 48.
I'm looking at four, yeah, that's a special finance, that's a special revenue fund.
Okay. Because there is some reference to food, the food delivery truck, but I will take this up with Mrs. Potter, and I will make sure that all of you have the food service.
Yeah, I mean, we need to look at a report to see where they at as far as budgeting. Are they, are they, are they still running over budget? Are they on track? Are they running below budget?
Got it.
Just like the other reports that she supplied.
Got it. Yep. Okay.
Any other questions regarding financial reports? Okay. Open purchase order listing. Any questions on the open purchase order listings? Any question on the contract listing? Any questions on the facilities listing? Seeing none?
I, I actually have a question on the facilities listing.
Wait.
So I was reviewing some of these, and I work in the construction field. And I had a thought process after, in the workshop, reviewing test scores, seeing the cost of the renovation, renovations to the building, as well as touring the high school with two floors and the condition that they're in. I had an idea, and I, I want you guys to hear me out on this and maybe give me some thought. It's a possibility to offset renovation costs. Create a feeder program that would provide an opportunity for students with skilled trade schools where most don't have an east side campus. Most don't provide hands-on experience. Where we could possibly create a feeder program with a grant, reach out to some of these trade schools, get these kids some type of co-op or dual enrollment, where when they graduate high school, they have hands- Where when they graduate high school, they have hands-on experience and an opportunity at a career. And it could, it, it could very much offset some of these costs. I don't know if anybody would have any feedback on that, but, but we got a lot of stuff we're putting on hold because of the cost of this roof.
I, I, and we talked about this before, Ms. Collins, and I, I think it's a great idea, but I'm, I'm not sure. That if we started this program next month, we would have students that would be capable of working on that roof.
I'm not talking about the roof. I'm talking about skilled trades. I'm talking about the HVAC, plumbing, electrical.
Yeah. But again, that, you know, those students, even with the internship, I don't believe, I mean, and you know more about in terms of procedurally than I do regarding HVAC. Um, that they would be capable or qualified or even learned enough to work on stuff other than just general laboring.
Well, that's, that was my thought. Like when you, when you look at schools like Northwestern Tech, which is an 11th month program, you know, that's book learning. That's not hands-on, but if we reach out to them with a feeder program where they can come in and have their, their staff. Handle that program, a team effort, and I'm not saying next month or two months or three months, it would take time to build this program. But we most certainly, we wouldn't be putting off repairs that are needed. Um, so it, it would definitely be a program that would take time to build. We would have to approach these schools and, and ask them if they'd even be interested. Um, and there's nothing of it like it's kind and, and it's an opportunity for our kids to get some, uh. Some, go into a career out of high school.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I think Ms. Collins is saying not having the, the students work on the facilities or the roof. But to build a relationship with those organizations where the, um. Now, Ms. Collins, the funding, to offset the funding, how do you propose that with your suggestion here? Because I don't see how it's going to offset funding for the roof, which is in dire need as of now.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the roof at all. I'm talking about the cost of the roof is putting other repairs on hold, like the HVAC repairs. Uh, rooftop maintenance is, um, just looking at some of these costs, you know, reconnecting a, a building to Wi-Fi, you know, the heating Wi-Fi, the, the pool heater. Um, though, all those repairs that were, are at a medium or low grade for us. Um, if we can create a program with a school like, um, Northwestern Tech. And, and create it such as a dual enrollment, um, where they can co-op within the school. We have two floors that are completely empty. Um, you know, and it would give it the trade school the opportunity for their students to have. On the job experience and our students to have the opportunity for co-op or dual enrollment.
Mr. President.
These, these numbers are high and, and we don't have the money to fix it.
Mr. President, may I speak?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Collins, I'm, I'm gonna address that real quick. Uh, I, I understand what you're saying. We have discussed this many times before. This is something that is, is, is dire need, of course. Um, but there's some back, uh, behind the scene working with this, especially when you're looking at, um, instructors. When you're looking at, uh, still usage, when you're looking at all those back, backdoor things that, that not really to forefront. Uh, and, and I love it. Uh, but Mr. President, can I say you take this to private curriculum committee before we can discuss that further?
Yeah, because like you stated, there are some, some challenges, not challenges, but there are some, some requirements in terms of the building usage. Uh, and even with, um, skilled trades, people coming in and being teachers. Um, I, I think that's something that would need to be fully vetted out. Uh, there might, could be some, some union issues involved since we would have somebody who was quote unquote, teaching. Students, whatever, regardless of what it is, uh, it would be a teaching position, so, um. There, there, there might be some issues that we'd have to deal with, with, with that, uh, as part of moving forward with, with this. But, uh, yeah, Doc, that, that's something that, you know, could be, be discussed at the curriculum, uh, personnel committee.
Yeah, because you know, with this discussion and Ms. Collins, ju- just, just you got a, a lot of cheerleaders and fan base right here that's in your corner with that, with that, what you discussed. But, um, there are some things that we try to implement. Uh, we've been through this before, and it's going to be some things, it's going to be some roadblocks, but the discussion needs to be had. So I'm, I'm inviting you, if you're not on the curriculum committee, maybe bring it forefront for that. That's where we can look at the intricate parts of it and go from there. So, uh, that's just my piece on that. Um, but, but I, I, I do hear you.
Thank you. That's, that's what I would like is just to, to look at it and, um, you know, potentially benefit the district and, and saving some money. Um, and providing opportunity for our kids.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Um. Yes, Ms. Collins, that was, that has been a thought process. I had even, um, and I was in preliminary discussion. With the UAW, um, UAW right now currently, um, send all of their, um, beginning skilled trade, uh, folk to Macomb County. So you got UAW coming from Jefferson Office Assembly Plant, Shap, Warren Truck Assembly Plant. And all the other plants around, even Trend Engine, and they go to, go to Macomb, so. I would definitely, I mean, I'm, I'm definitely in support of that, and also with the, I mean, and what happens is that if we can, like you said, we can enter to some type of partnership. And yeah, it goes back to curriculum, you guys can throw it around, and we probably need to bring the, you know, the, the teachers union to the table in this discussion also. Because this wouldn't be teaching kids, uh, social studies, science, math and all that stuff. Skilled trades teaches kids, you know, you want to be electrician, this is what you're going to do. You want to be a plumber. This is what you're going to do. You want to be a millwright. This is what you're going to do. So I think. It would be to our, to, 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 to our, to our advantage and also to the good for us, definitely really, really. Yeah, we've thrown this around and I hate to say it, but it, you know, people kind of heme and honk and kind of get little negative attitudes about it, then. We put it, then we table it, and then we, and we never come back to it. We need to stop doing that. If we're going to do something, we need to say, hey, okay, as a board, this is what we're going to do. Let's get it done. Okay, let's bring all, all the stakeholders to the table. Let's, let's, let's get it talked about. Let's discuss it because it's about the kids. As long as we keep tabling stuff, then we're not helping the kids. And a lot of our kids are not going to college. They're not. Lot of them are, some are, not a lot of them, some of them are dropping out, but a lot of them are not going to college. So we gotta, we gotta give our students some type of alternative. To being, going out into this society and contributing to society and going on, living their life. Because a lot of our kids are not going to college, and that's, that's not us. That's everywhere. So I think we should take a real hard look at this, um, and I'll do my part. I'll contact UAW. Um, and get all the information on that side. And I'll bring that, whoever the person, you know, I'll bring that, give it up to the curriculum, give you the information. And you guys, you know, we kind of go at it, but we, we gotta do something for these kids because they're not all going to college.
And I can bring to the table, you know, all the main contacts for, uh, Danamport, MIT, Northwestern Tech. We, I do, we deal with them on a regular basis. Um, and. I, I'd just like to see something come to play with this because there's nothing of its kind.
Mrs. Bill, would you like the input?
I really would because I have been listening and just getting really excited. I, I started thinking about Hazel Park and Amy Krupke. Um, she's the superintendent there right now, and she brought a program very similar to this to the students in Hazel Park. So, um, I was just in my phone looking to see if I had her number still, and I don't, so I'm going to make some, um, some calls tomorrow and see what she did as well. Because she created a program for the students in Hazel Park, very similar to this, so, um. Mrs. Collins, I would love to talk to you, um, about the, when you had those names and the places, I will, um, be right there making those phone calls for you.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Well, you know, I'm gonna throw my piece in here, you know, this is not a new discussion. We have always been shot down when we brought something like this up. So I, I do hope that that is not the case again. And I understand that if it does occur, and, and every time we're shot down, there's always good reasons behind it. So, uh, hopefully we can go past whatever challenges lay in front of us, we're getting this thing started, if it is something that's feasible. But I do understand, I'm a person that, you know, hey, I don't win all the time, but I, I know how to play, I'm, I'm a good sport. So hopefully it works, and like I said, the challenges come up, and I know we got a lot of challenges. All we can do is look at it and bring it to the table, and hopefully it works the way it should.
I think so. We'll, we'll see what happens. If you don't know me very well, but I don't take no for an answer very well. So, um, let me, let me see what we can get going here.
Thank you, Mrs. Collins, for bringing that forward. Like we, like we talked about that earlier, I thought it was a great idea to, uh, bring it forward to the board meeting. So thank you very much for, for following it up and, um, we'll, we'll see what, you know, see what grows from this. Any other questions regarding the facilities listings? Item nine, superintendent's comments.
Am I still muted? No, I'm not. Hi. Um, I have quite a, well, not quite a bit, but just a few things to talk to you about. The first one, um, Christie Nickel stole my thunder a little bit. Um, we do finally have the contract from Troon, and we are, um, Stacy and I are also going over the contract, and we have some questions as well. So we're looking forward to sitting down with Christie and Beth Piden to go over the contract and try to answer some of our questions that we have. So it's here finally. Um, the next piece is my, the confirmation of our return to learn plan. We do this every single month, and I give you a report on how we're doing in terms of the pandemic and study and, um, student learning. So today, um, we, again, uh, every Wednesday, I have a phone call with the House Department in Macomb County and all of the other superintendents. And there have been, um, so this is my report from today. There are no variants right now, those very, very, um. The variants that are really, really able, so that you catch COVID much easier. Um, there are no variants right now in Macomb County. The numbers in the state continue to come down. As a matter of fact, there's been a 17% reduction in all age groups. The number of cases in Macomb County are manageable, and when I say they're manageable, it means that the health departments are able to handle them. But in addition, they are able to do their contact tracing and follow up on every time we call or anyone else calls with a positive case. They've given away 10,000 vaccines, and this week there was an interesting switch from Pfizer to Moderna in terms of the vaccines. Uh, but the word of caution is, so for example, if you've already had the Pfizer vaccine, you cannot have your second vaccine be Moderna and needs to say Pfizer. I have, um, offered any chance I can to sub for teachers so that they can go and get their vaccines. The health department's just right around the corner from us. It's very organized. Um, and yesterday I had a wonderful afternoon in Mrs. Simpson's first grade classroom. I had a wonderful time, and the kids took a little advantage of me. They are, they knew they had a sub in there, but, um, they were fine. In pre-K, our program remains the same. They have been, um, doing remote learning since, they never stopped pretty much. Um, that would be our early childhood special ed center unless the parents requested that they go remote. Mrs. Campbell also has been, um, teaching her students full-time, so her kids have been coming in four days a week. Again, they're only half-day. Yesterday, our K-12 students began their hybrid program, and so we have an AA, which is Monday, Tuesday. Our BB, which is Thursday, Friday, and C, which is total remote. The total in the district, it's really interesting how this all shook out, but about 39 to 40% of our students at. The whole entire district, at Seminole, at the middle school, and at the high school are on the AA program. An equal number, a little bit less on the BB program, so there, they might range from 33 to 37%. And totally remote, the highest is 27% at the middle school, and the lowest is 22% at Seminole. So they're, they're hovering in the twenties, which to be honest, is pretty much the way the national averages has been across the country in terms of remote learning. The participation, that's another part of the report that I give to you, um, but there's, we don't have a ton of data because the month, we were off for Christmas. So, but December 21st and 22nd, we had 83% of our students participating, and then the next week, um, we were off for break. So the first week, we were back, the first to the eighth of January, we had 93.3% participation. And last week, the 11th through the 15th, we had 94.57% participation. And that's the end of my report, and I, I still have another piece for you, but this is the end of my reconfirmation plan. Are there any questions? And I've also liked to open this up for comments from the citizens' comments on this as well.
Yeah, I got one quick question, real quick. I was, I've been wanting to, I've been wanting to ask this question. What percentage of our students are taking, taking advantage of the Wednesday student catch-up and connection?
Um, the Wednesday student catch-up piece, well, that's mostly our remote kids.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. What, what, what percentage?
Okay, so, and, um, so totally in the district, 24% of our students at Seminole, 22% of our Seminole students are, um, remote. Uh, at the middle school, 27% of our kids are totally remote, and at the high school, 26% of our kids are totally remote.
And what percentage of those remote kids are taking advantage, say like, uh, do we have a, a big amounts, medium amount, small amount of kids? Who are, who need to come in on Wednesdays to get a little extra help, who are, like you say, who are on totally.
Okay, so what happens is they don't come in because these kids are totally remote. So what happens is on Wednesdays, teachers have additional office hours for students, and I don't have a percentage of, of that, Mr. Monk, of which kids are. Participating in that particular program, but I do know that quite a few of our kids are coming in, um, for that extra assistance, but again, that's all on remote with their teachers.
All right.
Adam Superintendent, might I say something?
Um.
You opened it up.
I'm a parent, I'm a, I'm a Seminole Academy parent.
Yes.
I have three students in Seminole Academy in Ohio, but they're all on remote at the time. My concern is this, um, the remote student only get like an hour and a half a week with their instructors. As opposed to the kids that are going in, I mean, they have like Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday. And I was just wondering, is there some kind of plan? I know we're in a kind of a tight situation with the COVID situation going on, which is an unusual situation for us. It's not a common thing for us. So, uh, I don't know if something could be modified. Uh, for the days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday days, if they could be cut maybe in the afternoon. Um, maybe an hour to give the remote kids more time with their instructors. Go see, as it stands now, your remote student is only getting an hour and a half a week. Which is not enough for a young kid with this teacher, I don't think. That's a suggestion, you know, uh, if, if some kind of way, uh, to kind of give a fashion across the board for everybody, because we're all in an uncommon situation. Um, to let the remote kids have more time with instructors, not just my kid, but all remote kids. And I don't know, I just suggestion, if it could be somehow worked out that instead of the day going from nine until 3:54, from nine until 1:54. Give the remote kids a little time in the afternoon, another hour and a half, whatever it is, how much time it is, I'm not doing the math too good right now, but anyway. Just want to throw it out, you know, and see if that could be worked out. However, I had talked to my principal, and he said his hands are tired, there's nothing he could do, you know, regarding that, you know, so. Uh, I, I'm coming to the board meeting tonight to just kind of throw this out and see if there could be something worked out in that respect. For all remote students to have a little more time with their instructors. I understand that parents can teach kids so much, but what the teachers can give them, the parents can't give them. And the kids will get something special from being with their teachers, also something special from being with their parents. And neither one can do each other's job, so I was just hoping and wondering if it could be somehow worked out. That, that could be a little more time allotted for all remote students rather than just an hour and a half a week, uh, to give them more time.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt, um, for, for your feedback, and I, um, will definitely take this back to my. Thank you, Mr. Merritt, um, for, for your feedback and I, um, will definitely take this back to my team. We'll, we'll see what we can do. If you could, um, contact me.
Thank you so much.
If you would contact me tomorrow so I could get back to you. I don't want you to put your phone number on, on chat or anything, but my email is B E E L S M at M T C P S. So I'm right, and, and I think I'm frightened center on the webpage as well. So send me an email so that I can get back to you with an answer.
Repeat the email address.
B E E L S M at M C T P S dot org or M T C P S, sorry, you know.
M T.
M T C P S. There's, there's too many things that rhyme. Um, dot org.
Is it possible I can get your email from a principal at, uh, Seminole?
Absolutely.
Would he have your email? Okay, fine. I would, I would touch base with Mr. Lucas and I would get it from him.
Thank you very much.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, sir.
Oh, you're welcome.
Ma'am Superintendent, you still, still you.
I know it is. Um, this is my favorite. Uh, today, uh, January, a school board recognition.
Before you go there.
What?
I, I had a question before Mr. Merritt.
Oh, okay.
So in terms of what you, you're talking about the numbers in McComb County, that going down and they're going down in the state. What, how, or have we looked at how we're going to move forward with bringing students back to school face to face, because the governor didn't make it a mandate, but she threw out March first as a date she wanted to see students back in school, um, face to face.
You know, that's a kind of a tough situation, uh, uh, because none of us know just which way the pandemic is going. None of us have a solution to it. Presidents and none of those people, they always say they're going to do this on a third, but they don't really have a solution for that. So to bring all the students back, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I wasn't, I wasn't asking you that question, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought you said, I thought you said Mr. Merritt. I'm sorry. My bad. Forgive me.
No problem.
I should have thought you said Mr. Merritt. Go ahead.
No, I was saying, following up with Mr. Merritt's comments.
Oh, okay, okay, fine, fine. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ma'am Superintendent.
So, so numbers are going down and what we are offering now with our hybrid, we are in compliance with what, um, Governor Whitmore, um, he has requested that we have face to face. But I would love to see us back full time, if possible, if the numbers are low enough, beginning in March. These are conversations that we have with our D T N team, our district turnaround team and our principals, and we are all going back and forth and ways that we can organize and come back to school safely. Where we've even talked about doing four days, so we have all of the kids four days a week. But that would give that Friday an extra day because some kids are going to, um, wish to continue remote. And we will offer, keep that option open for parents.
Uh, just, you know, because I noticed something that's down the road, but just, you know.
Yep, we're talking about it.
Okay, thank you. Your turn.
Mr. Barnes, like to ask a question, Mr. Rickman.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Superintendent Bills, my daughter is a student at the International Academy of McComb, but is still, she's still a part of the Mount Clemens School District as it relates to her playing sports and that's her home district. So is there a plan for the school to reengage the, um, the, the sports program for your female students?
Yes. Yes, there is. We, um, we have been working with, um, Mrs. Walker, um, Dante Walker, and she, or Hannah, I'm sorry, Dante Hannah. And, um, she is, uh, with all of the rules about what you can and can't do, it's been really difficult. So, Mr. Burns, has, have you heard, um, had any contact in regards to girls' basketball? Is that what you're requesting?
We haven't had any communications with Mount Clemens Community Schools about any sports offered to our students at any point this year.
Okay. Um, let me follow up with that and I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
If you recall, that was something that, you know, I mentioned, um, at the, at the, at the workshop, because we got that letter from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. And then M H S A A immediately went on record saying that, um, you know, the non-contact sports would begin and then practice. And I remember the discussion we had about how can you practice basketball six feet away? And that practice was scheduled to begin Saturday, January the sixteenth. And, uh, competition began February first or February fourth was the last information that I received. And that's why I was saying that since the board voted on whether or not to participate in the football, uh, season, that I, I believe that the board should vote on, uh, vote on that, uh, as well as, as having, uh, boys and girls' basketball, uh, if the numbers accommodated. That's something I, that's something I'll bring up for a discussion later on in terms of board resolution for that. Thank you for that question, Mr. Barnes.
Any other questions on the reconfirmation of our COVID learning plan? Okay, um, I would like to, um, now I can go into school board recognition month. The month of January gives us all the opportunity to acknowledge a special group of volunteer elected officials in education. January is school board recognition month and it lets us thank our board members for providing leadership and guidance for us here in Mount Clemens. Across the state, there are more than six hundred local boards of education. And Earl Rickman, Janine Walker, Teresa Jarrett, Jason Monk, Dr. David McFannin, Stephanie O'Neil and Jamie Collins are seven of more than four thousand individual school board members who donate. I can't even tell you how many hours of hard work to improve in the education of Michigan's kids, but our, our Mount Clemens children as well. School board members take the public trust very, very seriously and they dedicate a lot of hours of, to their work, both inside and outside of board meetings. They're members of our community and they have to be prepared to answer questions about the district at Myers and also at the board table. Attending school functions when we have them again, preparing for board meetings, reading financial reports, agendas, proposals, and especially this year, making difficult and challenging decisions about when we go to school, when we have games, when, what sports we participate. They're just a few of the regular activities our board members do. They also make commitments to continuous professional development and ensure that they're up to date on the latest educational issues. Today, more than ever, school board leaders are faced with the overwhelming charge of providing a quality education at a time of financial and pandemic constraints. And we also charge them with charting a course that provides for the future success for our current and our future kids. It's a great time to recognize our Mount Clemens School Board members for all their work. And I really hope that members of our communities, families in our communities, take a few minutes to thank them and learn more about the work our school board members do. Thank you. Thank you to the Board of Education for Mount Clemens and we have a small token of our appreciation for all of you. Mr. Shepherd, you're on.
Okay, I'm just gonna show this. Uh, these are cutting boards that we ordered.
You mean like cutting vegetable boards?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, so each will have your names on it. Uh, we have Mr. Rickman's on here and then there will be a heart over the city of Mount Clemens. So, uh, each of you have these personalized cutting boards waiting for you whenever you come pick it up or I can deliver it to you.
Yep, and they say the Mount Clemens Board of Education as well.
Yeah.
Why y'all always gotta show Earl? Why y'all couldn't show mine? I'm, I'm the cook of the group. I'm, I'm just, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, we have all seven of you. I double-checked the names were spelled correctly, so.
Show them all, Mr. Shepherd.
Oh, I could do that. Okay, so we got Jamie.
There you go, Earl. That's, that's medical correct. There you go.
All right, and that would be.
Back up, back up. You're too close. There you go.
That is lovely. Like lovely. I'm, I'm superintendent. Was that colors of the wood? Yes.
There we go. And Mr. Monk, here's your, uh.
Hey, there you go.
There we go.
Honestly, I'm not gonna wanna use it. I'm gonna wanna display it.
Oh, you're gonna wanna use it. They're fabulous.
I know. That's actually, that, that wood is actually the color of my granite in my kitchen, too.
Nice.
Yeah, I like that. That looks real good, Paul. Looks real good. You got the capital F and everything in there.
Yeah, I got two more here.
Hey, my name's spelled right. I'm just kidding.
Yes, I triple-checked, so it wouldn't be any surprise. And we got us.
That's marvelous. Thank you.
That is marvelous.
It is marvelous.
So that's all of you. And like I said, I could deliver it or you can all come pick them up.
Wow, that is beautiful.
Well, thank you so much.
Well, we have, um, it's speaking of picking it up, we have a few things that Paul will get in touch with you tomorrow. Um, things that need to be signed, um, so that for the checks and for the banking and things. So several of you are gonna have to come in anyway, so we'll let you know, um, that we have all that ready. You can come in and sign it and pick up your cutting board. I hope you enjoy them.
Thank you.
Thank you. And this, these were Paul's idea, by the way. Um, he did some research for me and, and found these and he did a beautiful job with this. So thank you, Paul. I'm done.
Madam Superintendent. Let's go on the agenda. Any, okay, well, I'll, I'll add this. Um, I sent out a listing of the committee assignments. I hope each, each one of you received it. Um, if not, let me try to figure out where it's at. Or every, did everybody receive it? That's easy.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, as, as stated in the, uh, email that I, I request the, the chairs to get with their members and the superintendent to determine, uh, the time, the date and time of the committee meetings. And then I'd also ask the chairs of the committees to write up a brief summary of items discussed or items recommended to move forward, uh, for the, for the board vote. So. So. Let's see. So, Mr. Mr. Lennonberry, you're still on the community coalition. That's not an appointment. You know, that's a, that's a sentence for you, but.
Correct. I do not have a report for either the community coalition or the education foundation at this time.
I don't have a report for the educational foundation either, so it wasn't just me that they were cutting out of the information link.
No, sir, they're ignoring both of us at once.
Exactly. Uh, let's see. I, I read something in the email, something about some policies. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Monk, um. The, Miss, Madam Superintendent, wasn't there an email about Paul sent some policies or something? Or am I mixing my emails up? You're up.
You're muted, Ms. Bill.
Can't hear you.
I know. You know, I have to put a dollar in the pot now. Uh, you are, you, um, are not, um, you have not mixed your emails up. Um, it was just some conversation about, um, board members and, um, attending, um, uh, closed sessions and, uh, but I think we're all set.
Okay, all right. Okay.
But I do know that just a comment on policies, uh, I do know that, um, we have two major policy updates a year and that second one is coming out. It usually comes out February, no later than March. That's a major policy update and one usually comes out in, uh, October is a major policy. So we will have some, uh, policy updates coming up and we'll get those out and to all, to my other two board members that's on the policy committee, I will be sending you out a checklist, uh, what we have done in the past. Um, what I put into effect a couple of years ago is that we reviewed all of our policies to make sure everything is up to date. So I'll send all that information out to you guys.
And also, Mr. Monk, after the orientation, um, the two, uh, Ms., Ms. O'Neil and Ms. Collins should have received a copy of the policies via email. And it was also, if they wanted a hard copy, that they could get that five, they could get that five pound package if they wanted it.
Woo, I would, uh, get, get the email. Don't get the, don't get the hard copy. Thank you, sir.
We emailed it to them and said if they wanted the hard copy, get that, you know.
Right, right.
Couple of hundred trees.
I know. I remember when they stuck that on the table in front of me. I'm like, ooh.
Right. Okay, um, there is a legislative meeting tomorrow evening and it's a Zoom meeting. And I, I hope to be out of my other meeting in time to participate, uh, in the legislative meeting. I know that it's a new, a new session. Uh, there are a lot of new senators and, and state reps. Um, so not sure how much, uh, motion, uh, activity they've done, uh, in two or three days with them being, uh, back, newly back in session or even, even their unit in session. Uh, and there might be a report from the, uh, Michigan State, uh, Board of Education. So if I'm, hopefully I can get in enough at a meeting to, uh, hear what's going on and provide a, uh, update on our next meeting. Uh, let's see, before we go into executive session, uh, we mentioned, uh, Mr. Barnes had mentioned, asked about the girls' basketball. Uh, and at the workshop, we had talked about since, um, the M H S A A just came out with the requirements for, uh, for winter sports particip- participation. Um, the superintendent did mention something that she had, um, spoken with, uh, Mrs. Hannah, uh, about the requirements. Uh, and they're, they're not too much different than the requirements that we had for, for the foot fall sports. Um, but if, if we offer one, we have to be, we have to be equitable. If we offer one, a boy's sport, we have to offer, um, the same amount of, of girl's sports. Uh, in the winter, uh, we generally have girls' and boys' basketball. And is it volleyball for girls or is that a fall sport?
That's fall sport. Volleyball is fall.
Okay, so the winter, the winter sports that, um, uh, that would be in play for, for the board to take action on would be boys' and girls', uh, basketball. Like some discussion about that.
Oh, we're discussing it now?
Yeah, yeah, like some discussion about it.
Okay, um, I mean, yeah, I think we, I mean, I guess the question is, I mean, I don't think we'll have a problem with boys, which we never do. The problem is always with girls, even back when I was coaching. I mean, literally I had, and Earl, you know this, I mean, I, I had five to five, six, five to seven girls. Um, so it all depends on what kind of numbers that we have for girls, um, going forward. Um, that would be my only concern.
Anybody else? So I, I would like, uh, someone to make a motion that we offer uh, winter sports, basketball, girls' and boys', based on the number of participants. That we move forward with offering boys' and girls' basketball contingent upon the, uh, numbers of, of, of participants or something.
I'll make that motion. Uh, Mr. President, I move that we, um, direct the superintendent to offer, um, winter boys' basketball and winter girls' basketball, uh, contingent on, uh, participant, um, um, how can I say, participant, participant, the number of participants, uh, for each sport.
It's moved by Mr. Monk to offer, the director superintendent to offer, um, boys' and girls' winter sports, basketball contingent upon number of participants.
Yes.
Now, Mr. President, does that include the middle school also?
No, doc, the middle school is not the same. It's, that's not a different, that's, that's usually the spring. They, they use a, middle school uses. No, doc, doc, the middle school is not the same. It's, that's not a different, that's, that's usually the spring. They, they use a, middle school usually start up right after the, uh, the, uh, winter, um, boys and girls' basketball. Then the middle school starts up. It may be, I mean, I, don't hold me, I mean, that's how it was.
Well.
I remember how it was, but I mean.
The motion. The motion would cover that because you didn't say varsity. You said winter boys and girls' basketball contingent upon number of participants. We didn't say high. We didn't say middle school. We said offered contingent upon number.
Oh, there you go. All right.
I second it.
Seconded by Dr. Matt Fadden. Any additional questions, comments on the motion on the floor? You ain't receiving none. Call roll, please.
Sorry, how are you, Dollar? Mr. Monk?
He's back there cutting on our boards to see if they work.
Yes. Yes.
Dr. McVenn?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yeah.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next item I'd like to share with the board and, uh, we talked about it, um, at the work session and uh, superintendent mentioned it a couple of times in her presentation about a retreat, um, in the and then, excuse me, after the organizational meeting, um, we generally have a strategic plan, uh, session, a retreat. Uh, where we go over, uh, where we are as a district and we set goals uh, for the district and work on, uh, set goals for the superintendent's evaluation. Uh, so I would like to, if we could, potentially have a meeting this month. Um, and I would just throw out, just for the sake of the discussion, the, um, having the board retreat, January thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, beginning at nine P M. at the I S D. As you, as board members know, that we've gone to the I S D on several occasions, uh, for retreats. And we've had a conference room. Well, to be in line with COVID, we would not be, uh, in the smaller conference room, but a larger conference room that we could be socially distanced, uh, apart, um, that we could, we could do the work, uh, of the retreat. We'd get the reviews uh, from the superintendent and commuter administrative staff. And then we work on directions, the strategic plan, um, and the goals for, for the year. Now, just open that up for discussion. I'm not putting that out there as a motion, but I can, i- if I need be, um, that, that's um, in terms of being able to do it. I, I believe doing it on a Saturday, uh, is better for all of us that we're not, that way we're not at a meeting till ten, eleven o'clock at night. It could be, uh, three, easily four, four, four hour retreat.
Oh, okay, cause you said nine P M. You meant to, you meant to say nine A M.
I'm sorry, no, sir. Nine A M, sir.
I'm about to say.
Bedtime.
I'm sorry, no, nine A M.
Okay.
We could either get the I S D to provide a couple of materials for us, depending on how long we.
That'd be fine.
Sounds good to me.
Well, I, I'll make it in form of a motion. I move that we establish the board retreat, um, for January thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, uh, beginning at nine A M. at the McComb I S D.
I support.
Seconded by Member Jarrett. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, just a quick, um, will my, um, administrative team be there as well or just me?
That's up to you.
Okay.
Any additional questions, comments? You ain't receiving none. Call roll, please.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal? Uh, I'm sorry, was that yes?
Yeah, yeah.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, let's see. Next item on the agenda is executive session. Um, we're going, we're asked to go into executive session for the purpose of contract negotiations, right, Madam Superintendent?
Looks like it worked. Are we all back?
Nope. Dave and, uh, Earl's not here.
Right.
Uh, oh, Ms. O'Neal, Ms. O'Neal or Ms. Collins ain't here either.
No, I'm here.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah, um, yeah, I think it's just, uh, Dr. McFadden and, and Earl is still in the other room.
I have closed it. They'll be back in forty-five seconds.
Yeah, Earl's stuck in the fourth dimension.
Well, you know, Earl, Earl got all that, all that old equipment over there. You know, he's still, so, you know, we gotta upgrade him.
He's still our Dollar.
He's back.
We're talking, his, our ears are burning and everything.
Yeah. We're, we're gonna have to upgrading, yeah.
There he is.
Unmute yourself, Earl.
Talking.
Move to adjourn.
No. No, we gotta come out. We gotta move to come out of the executive session.
I moved to come out of executive session.
Moved by Dr. McFadden to come out of executive session.
Support.
Second, Ms. Jarrett. Any comments, questions? Call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yeah.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Member McFadden to adjourn.
Depart.
Second member. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Nobody wants to comment. I understand. No problem.
Our retreat is, um, the thirtieth at nine A M., correct?
Yes, sir.
I S D.
I S D.
Okay. See, everybody, they were gonna have donuts and coffee.
I will, I will, I will let, I will keep, I will, I will send information on what room, uh, we'll be in, uh, once we get that resolved, uh, figured out with I S D.
All right, thanks.
Thanks. Uh, no further questions. Call roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Monk?
Jason?
Hey, Ms. Collins? I'm sorry, Ms. Collins?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Definitely, yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yeah.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
No, I wanted to make, I wanted to hear comments, but yes. Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned at nine P M. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.